Calling the meeting to order at 7:06 PM on July 8, 2014. Members in attendance right now, my name is Katie Silberger, I am the chair. We have with us Vicki Damaskin, Ellen Rocco. We are expecting momentarily Dave Cacamo to arrive. Tonight Joanna Weiss will be absent as she is on her honeymoon. We also have in attendance our Secretary Brogan O'Donnell, our Planning Director Bren White, and our Village Board Liaison Sally Rhodes. We have one agenda item tonight which is a public hearing, but we're going to do a few things while we wait for Dave Cacamo to arrive. So, the first thing that we can address are the minutes from last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any corrections?
We love them.
Okay, they were good. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The minutes are approved. And then, the second item that we will just discuss briefly, our wonderful Planning Director Bren took suggestions that we had compiled over a period of time for a new form for area variances. And it has some very good things on it that we felt were missing such as who actually owns the property, what is the tax map ID, and then we are asking applicants to cite specific items in the code and explain how their variance request impacts what is written in the code so that we're all much clearer. And then, finally, we ask them to explain to us why the variance is needed, and then to address the five criteria that we are required to consider when we consider a variance. So, it is, I think, a much improved form and we would like to get it up on the web. One possibility, when we get the right software, would be to put up a version that could actually be filled out and turned in on the web. Yes?
The new web designer is about to arrive, and so Brogan would be able to meet with him and get your forms up.
Oh, that is marvelous. That is such good news.
When will he be here?
I think as we speak.
As we speak?
As far as I know. You could check with Nancy Brogan and just double check when he's coming, when you might have an appointment with him, and get all of, you know, your minutes up there correctly, updated, archived, your forms, anything you think that people need to know about the ZBA, how to approach, how to apply. Bren is always available to meet with people if they don't understand the process, they just call and make an appointment. Now, so all that kind of stuff should be up.
Okay? Yeah, and I just want to say, I think it's a priority to get this form up that is much clearer to applicants, you know, because you knew sort of what was going to happen because you're a professional, but we have homeowners who come here and they have no idea how we judge, you know, what we're required to do by law. And so, we tried to incorporate that into the form so that it wouldn't be so opaque to people, and they wouldn't get big surprises when they, you know, actually are sitting before us.
First thing you might say is, "We're not a sphere group."
Okay.
Do you have to tap on the form?
Very nice. Swinging Board of Appeals, yes. So, yeah, that's something that I'm really glad to hear will go up because I think it'll make the process easier for everyone, and it'll make it easier for us because then we'll really all be on the same page about what items in the code are being questioned, or, you know, that the variance is affecting.
So, now, what are we doing about a use?
Well, in her-
That's the next step!
In her copious spare time.
Do we need to be doing stuff the way we did for this?
I think that it can pretty much follow along the same guidelines, and then I'll give it to you guys to look at and see if I'm saying things right.
That's a good answer.
It's a great answer. Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of the same things, like who owns the property, how do we get in touch with you, and, you know, what is being requested, and then making it very clear that it's not a preponderance of elements of the criteria that we're to consider, but you have to, as I understand it, you have to meet all of that cri- all of those criteria.
On the use variance?
On the use variance, yeah.
Would it make sense to have just a separate, single page that describes, you know, generically what a use variance is, or what an area variance is in plain language, and why there's a difference between the two, or is that unnecessary?
I don't know that we necessarily need a form for it, but maybe we could put them on when our new website comes up, maybe we could have a page that talks about variances and why they exist and-
That'd be great.
And could we actually link to something that New York State has already done?
Talk about the-
Oh, good.
Did you say no?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Good idea.
Okay.
I think you called.
I thought so myself.
I put a note on the TV, we're sitting there eating dinner, and there was no clock in the room.
Are we all? I just have one more question. When I was going through some papers today, I wondered, I saw a list of the fees. Are we interested in reconsidering the fees involved in this?
The board has to the for it a proposal to take all fees, except those which are legally binding, right, out of various places in the code and put them in one standardized form which will be reviewed annually as we reorganize.
Yes. So that the costs will be reconsidered?
Bren, and Mark, and Rich, and Brogan, and other people involved, but particularly for planning the zoning, those were the areas where we were really in need of provision.
Yeah, that's-
And so, all of that, I think we're ready to go with it now. We've had a number of discussions, things were left out. We're trying, as you know, whenever you try, to make everything perfect. Something slips by. I think we've now found all sorts, right?
I think so.
And they have renewed, clerk has renewed copying fees and FOIL requests of fees and all that. All of the fees that are charged in the village are now on one standardized sheet, and we're going to be acting on it, we're going to have a public hearing on it, and then who will act on it?
I feel so modern.
Pardon?
I feel so modern.
Modern?
Well, I mean, you know, what can you-
[laughing]
I mean, it doesn't take much to try and catch up.
No, but it's-
It's a little effort, but Bren and her board have done a very, very good job of reviewing things, making records.
I would agree with that. I have been very impressed with what Bren has done in the short time she has been here. Amen.
While we're on the topic, I would just like to say, for the record, to the Building Department, I think this moment in time is fabulous.
Yes.
And I think everybody should know that, and I think the public should know that they can have confidence in what information they receive from the Building Department, and what the Building Department has done to their expectations, and that they can go to banks and-
So to speak.
And the Building Department has been doing a great job with our Thursday on blocks and notifying people of violations, including me. I was hanging over my sidewalk. Ellen got it.
Yes, indeed.
Okay.
But, you know, people are concerned that, and both the owner and I have heard comments made, that this is a no buck. Depending upon who you are, you will be treated differently. I have to say, and I want to say publicly, that is patently not true. This Building Department deals with issues, and it doesn't matter who you are, if you've got a problem or creating a problem, you will be notified and expected to change.
And I just would like to-
I think you serve a lot of credit.
I would just like to add one thing to that, and that is that there is no way to
do this but bit by bit by bit across the village. It can't be done all at once. And so, if somebody three blocks away from where the particular walk took place seems to be not conforming and not getting a violation, just they should wait.
Yeah, it will be on their straight. So, I do want to thank you and congratulate you.
Thank you, absolutely. And I would just like to say, for the viewers out there, there are easy-to-use complaint forms. If you see something that you know needs to be rectified, please get a complaint form at the Building Department and complete it, and track the action on it.
Right.
And that should get up on the website, too.
Yes, very good, the complaint form, yes.
Yes. Okay, so, now that we have everyone here, how you doing, Dave?
I'm here.
So, what's the other guy look like?
I have rotator cuff surgery.
Wow, rough. I think you could come up with a better story.
The surgeon told my wife it was not pretty.
Ooh.
Well, he told me it was bad. He said, "It's bad, but it's not the worst one I've ever done." So, I was like, "Oh, that was everything I liked."
That's true.
I just have to do it like a regular five.
Oh, yeah, you can't move it. That's rough. Yeah, it is.
And then, the physical therapy.
Ooh. Okay, well, tonight we have a public hearing, so would you all like to join us?
Yeah.
I think we took all the good cheers, I'm sorry. Would you like a motion to open the public hearing? And then, I would like a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I would like to say.
Yes, you do, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so-
By the way, if I, if I'm not going to be here, I'll let you know. And if I don't get here on time, like-
We'll call you ten minutes early.
-Vicki, they call me up because I'm only five minutes away. And I am going to forget.
Okay, so, let me first ask if there is anyone in the public who would like to speak about this application? Okay, if not, would you like to say anything to us?
Hi.
Hi.
We came in last time for a zoning board, an area variance.
Okay.
And it's a proposed restaurant with residential on top, two-story restaurant, former Yankee Space, 51 Main Street. And I guess last time we mentioned the planning, the Elster County planning maybe getting back to us? My gut is they may not have.
Have they gotten back to us, Bren? Because you're on, they're on the county road.
I didn't get anything yet, but I can check the downstairs box and maybe-
Yeah, or my next, my-
Yeah, I think they have a month to sign.
Yeah, we may be asked for a 30-day period if I'm out.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, if they don't get back, then-
What if we send it?
No, we definitely have a 30-day thing. I should have something.
Then if, then if-
Cool.
Yeah, if we don't have it, then it's-
It's an approval.
It's by default an approval.
Okay, well, then that's good news.
Good news.
There wasn't really, you know, we're not changing the street. Okay, so that's-
Okay, so, is there any discussion on the board? Does anybody want to ask any questions?
No, I asked everything I wanted to ask last time, and I've looked over it since, and no problems.
Okay. I have concerns because it seems to me that it is a self-imposed hardship, and it seems to me that it is a dangerous precedent to set for granting such a huge variance. Did you buy the building recently?
In December.
You bought it in December, and did the Building Department tell you what you needed to consider in change, changing it?
They told me whatever was in violation, like the whole back section was in violation.
Of the standards at that time?
Yes.
So, it was already in violation and it hadn't been remedied?
No.
By the previous owner?
Those were not zoning violations. That was an approved addition. It was the state of the building that was in violation.
I don't understand what you said.
The addition was approved by the planning zoning boards, and, but it wasn't completed, as you probably remember.
Oh, there was going to be something up on top, and then it had to be-
They took it down, and then the back wasn't finished, it was, the roof was pouring water into it, well, probably still is, into the addition, and, you know, it's just unfinished. That's, that's, those are the violations. It was not related to, they didn't do anything, it wasn't within the last application. But, just to respond, and you may not be done, but I-
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, okay.
No, please.
We're within the height, you know, allowable height and use of, on the site. We're not exceeding, except for the area variance aspect, but most of the sites downtown are also in non-compliance already, so, just by nature of the lots that-
Non-compliance with-
In terms of area, you know, because they're small lots.
And, right, and they were built before standards were established?
Right, and if we were in compliance, we'd have one-story buildings, every, I mean, you know, it's kind of something that should might be looked at with, relating to the idea of density downtown, trying to make it denser versus in the outline areas, which is the town boards directing, I guess, the mayor's directing.
I guess I don't understand about the parking regulations. It doesn't seem wise to me, knowing the complaints about parking, to double the restaurant's table size and not have to deal with parking. And the parking regulations were changed relatively recently?
Mm-hmm.
And the reason for that was because there's no place for more parking?
A situation like this where you can't correctly go wrong, right? Our parking regulations have, for a very long time, were in need of redefinition. We were having definitions that were 50 years old. In the winter, we, we finally, we gave, Ellen and ZBA, and all boards were invited to participate in the revisiting of the whole-
Definitions, yeah.
Chapter of definitions.
Mm-hmm, I remember.
In New Pools, in terms of parking, in terms of building, in terms of building use. And so, basically, rather, and most communities, I think a lot of communities are doing this, rather than having strict, defined, you must have X number of parking spaces for X use, which wasn't really happening anyway, we've now got the ability for the planning board to look at a proposal and to evaluate its contribution to the community as opposed to saying, oh, well, it's just this, and it must have, is that right, Phil, you think?
Yes.
It's really a matter of giving guidance so that, you know, a hairdresser wouldn't need to have 20 parking spaces, and, you know, there's the flexibility of allowing to assess what is being contributed, what is the building being used for, and how parking will be dealt with. And I understand, in terms of what you're saying, that you can look at the current footprint of the building we're discussing, but that building never should have been allowed there to begin with because when you take the streetscape, the whole big streetscape of Main Street, it is not in compliance with the rest of the streetscape, which are two, three stories high, a lot of depth to them, and that was sort of just a, I don't know how that got to be, because that's before my time, but, you know, that, if you will, was the odd man outbuilding. And so, if you look at, and I think it's here, is it this? Yummy from all. If you look at the other buildings on both the left and the right of Main Street, those buildings are no larger, and I know this is hard to think about, they're no larger than the variance you are being requested to consider. If you look at it relative to the buildings that are there. If you look at it just within that framework of the building that's currently there, you're quite right. But, you know, the streetscape is very important, I think, and the presentation of the streetscape, in my opinion, is very important. So, I think you want to maybe look at the proposal in terms of its contribution, or its negativity, whichever way you look, to the value of the overall streetscape that it is trying to be a part of.
She talks real good, doesn't she?
Carl had said at one point, you know, you said, "It's a dangerous precedent." He said, "No, you can prove one thing and you can not prove something else."
Oh, I know, I know.
It doesn't, we're not setting any precedent for anything.
Well, I think it needs to be considered.
Well-
I mean, we can do what we do, I understand that, but-
I mean, because we did prove one thing because there wasn't enough space for it, but that was a totally different situation.
Yes.
And like Carl said, you have to take each situation into account-
Right.
-and look at the benefits to the community and so forth.
And nothing is like anything else.
And, I mean, this building was built when? 1890-something, or 1902, or something there?
Well, in the lot size, they have, it's impossible.
Try 1950.
It's a liquor store, I think, one story.
It was built in 1950.
A bet?
Yeah, but whoever drew those property lines, didn't that have a straight rule?
They were obviously drunk.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know, Dave.
Yeah, you know, Vicki, I would also point out that they aren't being required to request a variance for parking.
No, I understand that.
And-
I understand that, but it's a bell that you can't unring, it's-
It's a bell you can't unring, but I think that the fact that they are putting that takeout window so that they're encouraging foot traffic is a positive.
I have a problem with takeout windows and all the litter we already have.
That I agree with.
Wouldn't it be all the restaurants on Main Street being the same predicament as far as parking goes? I mean, there's-
Oh, yes, but then, already exists.
So, boom.
Yeah.
You know, if you-
Already exists.
-have to park, we have to either have Dave Cacamo's parking car who can find a place on Union Street in San Francisco right in front of the building he wants to go to, or you can park wherever you can park and go where you want to park.
And so, I guess, the newest member of the community of all of us sitting here now, right?
Probably.
Within almost six years, I'm, I'm feeling as though this addition to the community is a really valuable, because when people think about downtown New Pools, they think bars, and the bars. And this restaurant is not only not a bar come restaurant, this is a restaurant that I think will attract, would attract clientele among tourists, whatever.
It's a different flavor of cuisine that they already have.
Exactly, and it's, and from what I am hearing about it, it's a different level of quality. So, I'm thinking about a place like Atavua, and I have no idea whether they had any issues or not, so that isn't my opinion. But, I mean, that's a place that's full, it's hard to get a reservation there, and people, it can't all be walking people because it's not that kind of a restaurant, and yet some, it doesn't, that people might have to walk an extra couple of blocks, doesn't seem to deter people from Atavua. And I think, just to finish, I think that the visual impact, as Sally is saying, the visual impact of a quality, of an interesting quality building that's respectful of the architecture around, but really, I mean, this is a, I should pardon this question, just like a grown-up place, and I think that's really important to nurture, because that's what I would like to see more of, so.
What kind of food do you have?
Greek food.
Oh, Greek, doesn't it?
No, just not-
Greek, not diner Greek?
Not, like, Yanni's had a very small, limited menu, which is, for me, it's just Greek fast food, and it's not the fine dining. Now, they didn't have clam chops or grilled fish or relata, because they didn't even have charco grill, like, how you gonna have a request on a charco grill?
You can have luca modas.
Of course, I'll try making myself that.
I grew up next to a Greek family.
Bren, have you, do you want to say anything today?
Not unless you have a specific question for me.
How specific do you want me to be?
I think that this development looks like a good one, and same thing that I wrote in my memo, that unfortunately, this area, any business in this area would need an area variance to do mixed use, but we want to encourage mixed use because that's the kind of development that we want downtown, so.
So, beaten but not bowed. Okay. Dave, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I've said enough.
Okay, Ellen?
I'm good.
Okay, so, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Well, first of all, to close the public hearing, we gotta-
So moved.
Okay.
Oh, I thought the public hearing was over.
No, no, we're-
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we stop the-
She just did, you can say it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, would anybody like to make a motion with respect to, to approve ZBA 1410?
I move.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck. And-
You're gonna need it, man.
Well, it's gotta be a tough place to just do the construction.
Any restaurant is a tough one.
I'll be down there for some luca modas.
What else you-
Fifty, sixty years.
Break down all the menu items you want, all the Greek stuff, I'll try to get it on the menu. If it's time to be like a regular time, I'll make it a special for you guys.
Oh, when are you saying?
No, I don't think we want that. That included anyone in the community.
Are you gonna put your menu online?
We'll look forward to it.
Will you put your menu online?
Yes.
I guess that's where your menus now.
Okay, so, we have approved the minutes, so you guys are good to go.
Thank you.
And could I have a motion to, what?
You said they have to fill out some forms, some papers, something signed.
Oh, do we have to do that?
Do you need to sign the plan?
No, we don't have to sign the plans. There's some paperwork that has to be signed, I don't remember what it is, what is it, Sally?
The red tape.
No, there is something we have to sign.
Yeah, I don't think they sign, for the planning board, we have a memo that the whole planning board signs, so-
I thought, I thought Carl always said, "Well, you've got to sign the, something around."
We've, we've never really done things with written, like, written resolutions, or-
If the board wants to do that, we can adopt it.
Yeah, we've, we've never done that. We just, it's in the minutes, there's a record of it. We, we approved this without any caveats on it, it is a straight approval of ZBA 1410, ZBA 1410 is on record, and that would, I think, attach to the property in some way in the official- And that would, I think, attach to the property in some way in, in official documents, so.
Can your minutes move forward to the planning board so that they know that you had it activated?
Yes, so.
And I think you're on the agenda.
Mm-hmm, yes, we are.
Yes.
Coming up.
Yeah, the public hearing's next Tuesday.
Thank you so much for-
It's like this room's had become, has become my second home.
I'm sorry to hear that.
No, it's all right.
I'm not coming here, you said for a mother. If I'm bored, I'm just gonna come here on Tuesday.
Is that? I don't, I mean, we got copies and it's just gonna-
Right, I agree.
We're not gonna hold on to them.
Okay.
I mean, those can't have been inexpensive. So, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This was-